Thank you for joining us this evening, the regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City, City Council on April 25th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Gary Aldrich.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Jill Humphrey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
I call him as President, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Ron Rhodes is going to lead an invocation and Councilman Gary Aldrich is going to lead in a pledge. If everybody please stand.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you that so far we still get to live in the greatest country in the world, the greatest state in that country, and the wonderful little city of Park City. We thank you, Lord, for all of those who've made this city what it is today. And Heavenly Father, we know, we live in a city, Father, where we can feel safe, and where we've raised our kids. And we thank you, Father, for these men sitting on this council tonight. We ask for your protection for them. We ask that you give them wisdom in the decisions that they have to make. And Father, we thank you for our police department here. And I thank you for each and every officer and for the work that they do in risking their lives for us and making this a safe place. And I ask for your protection upon them. And not just them, Father, but all of the peace officers in every sheriff's department and state and federal and so forth. Father, we just, we just thank you. And I just ask that you bless this meeting. Now, Father, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And I just want to make sure that all the council received the updated agenda that went out on Friday, which is what's up for approval. John? And Jim? I second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes seven zero. The first item we have under awards and presentations this evening is we have a proclamation observing Police Week and designating May 15th, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Park City. And I'll read that proclamation now. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States has designated May 15th, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. As whereas, the members of the Park City Police Department play an essential, an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens and our visitors to Park City. And whereas, it's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of the police department. And that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and weak against oppression and intimidation. And whereas, the Park City Police Department has grown to a modern, scientific law enforcement agency which uneasily provides a vital public service. Now therefore, I raise man, the Mayor of Park City, call upon the citizens of Park City and upon all patriot, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through the 21st of 2017 as Police Week. With the appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered and dedicated to the service to their community, and in doing so have established themselves an invaluable enduring reputation for preserving the rights and securities of all citizens. I further call upon the citizens of Park City to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives and have been disabled in the performance of their duty. Tom?
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
And Gary?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes seven zero. Thanks, Chief. The next item on the agenda is public forum, and tonight we have Steve Brown to talk about the July 4th activities. Steve?
I'll make it quick this evening. It looks like you guys have a pretty busy agenda. One thing I'd like to ask is Bill's taken some photos from last year and turned them into the city, and I was wondering if we could have permission to use those on our website for the event?
Sure.
Okay, and just a quick reminder to everybody, we are looking for volunteers badly this year. Every year it's just as big of a challenge as it always is, and we have very few this year. We've got a pretty big show planned for everybody. We've got five live musical acts this year. We've got two during the day, three in the evening. All of our usual stuff will be there, Troubles, The Clown, The Rides, everything. We need people to help out with all that. We supposedly have the dog show covered this year. We can use some help with that. So anybody wants to come out and volunteer on our website is www.parkcityks4th.com, same as the city but with fourth dot com on the end. We got it both ways. Spell it, put the number four in, it'll work either way, and you know, there's a signup form on there to volunteer. We've pretty much got the whole event put together. We've, the reason I came up is we had somebody from the front desk say we've had people coming in asking for flyers. We're not quite ready to hand them out yet because we haven't inked the concert contract yet, and until we have ink on that, we can't announce it. But it will be a good concert. It's five local bands, but they're all very top-notch, so.
Okay.
That's about all I had. Just wanted to let you know, we are live, we are out here, and the website's current, so if you want to see what's going on, give us a look.
All right. Hey, if you get with Dana before you leave, we'll make sure that we have the link and we'll post it on the Facebook and Twitter feed too to help promote your, your.
Perfect. I will do that.
Your website.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Looks like Melvin may have a question for you.
Steve, I want to just tell you, you and your committee do a great job with that Fourth of July and everything, so.
Well, thanks. If anybody's got any ideas, we're all open to them. We've got one new event that may happen out on where the old pool area used to be, so be looking for that. I haven't been able to contact the person back that emailed me, but it'd be kind of cool if it comes together.
All right. Well, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. That was, Steve, Steve Brown was the only one we had signed up for public forum, so we'll move on to staff reports, and we'll start with our Chief of Police, Chief Boston. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. This evening I wanted to report to you about our, our status of our hiring. You know that we have been in the process of hiring for some time now. When I came to you last fall, you know, we had a, really a crisis. We had four police officer positions that were open. The police department has seventeen total police positions, and four of those were open. And, and I'm pleased to say that we've been able to fill all four of those. We just hired the, the fourth officer here this past week, so. Just kind of run through the list real quick here. Tracy Prado, who was, some of you know her, she worked here as a code enforcement officer with us before. She is just about to finish her field training. She's graduated from the academy. The academy's fourteen weeks, and then there's beyond that roughly ten weeks of additional field training, so she's just about ready to finish that. I just went to graduation ceremony last Friday at the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center over by Hutchinson, and Todd Langford, he was the second of the four that we hired, just graduated. So we're looking forward to having him out in field training. I believe he just started today, in fact. Cody McCall is in the academy right now. He's in the fifth week out of the fourteen weeks. And it was really an honor for him to find out that his class elected him as his class president, and there's about sixty people in the class, so that's really quite an honor. It speaks well of him. We just hired Luke Tibbetts, and as I said, he'll start with us here, he'll work here for about three weeks before he goes to the academy. He starts the academy on May 22nd, so. We're going to have, well, I'll go on here before I get to that point. We hired Shane Alexander, who's a code enforcement officer. You know, we had a retirement there, so Shane is in his training phase also. And we have right now an administrative assistant position open in the records department, so we're trying to fill that. And so we're going to have six people that are in training in the police department all at once. And we're fortunate that we got some really quality people, and I'm, I'm very pleased with the people that we're able to hire. Out of these five that we have hired, four of them have a bachelor's degree, one of them has an associate's degree. Not that that's everything by any means, but that kind of gives you a sense of the educational level that we're able to, to attract, so I'm, I'm really excited. We're going to have some good folks to be able, to get out and serve the community. Also, just to, I'll end on this note, it won't take your time, but the training process is, it's a really long process. Obviously, the selection process takes a long time, the background and everything else. And then fourteen weeks in the academy, another ten weeks roughly when they get out. Beyond that, it usually takes at least a year for them to really get up to speed, and then, and really about two years is where we, some people are different than others, but about two years to really get them up where they're functioning real well by themselves. So we've got some, some exciting folks in place here, and so I think it's a good report. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? Nope. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll hear from our city attorney, Doug Mosher. Doug?
Mayor and council, I just wanted to give you a, a little preview update on the legislative session this year. Probably have more to fill you in on when they're done, and that usually is about in the second meeting in, in June. I say, you haven't heard much, I haven't really felt like we've heard a lot. Right now, they're in recess. It's their spring break. They were gone April 10th, and they'll be back on Monday, May 1st. They're coming back for what's traditionally called the veto session, where they, again, traditionally deal with matters that have been vetoed by the governor. This year, expectation is that they're going to be pretty busy, and that'll be the, the same three big items that took most of their efforts during the regular session, and that's going to be fund, school funding, constitutional school funding, balancing the budget, and then dealing with, I guess what you generally call healthcare, and how and, and what manner they might, might or might not plug into the federal government's healthcare and Medicare. There wasn't really much accomplished during the regular session that affected us. There were two things that didn't happen that do have an impact on us. One is that nothing more happened, and I don't know that there was really anything that was expected to forestall what's coming up with the restrictions that were placed on us, I've lost track of time, two or three years ago, as far as ad valorem taxation and increasing that. You know, you've talked about that during the budget process, Jack's talked about it, Daniella. That's not going to change. The second thing that's not going to change is there was some hope that the exemption that we're under right now in, in our ability to prevent guns from entering our public buildings runs out in July. There was an attempt to get a bill, well, a bill was put forward, it was worked somewhat, it went down in flames, so there's going to be no reprieve from that. So come this July 1, if we want to prevent guns in our public buildings, we have to provide sufficient security measures. The chiefs described those to me. They require armed security, and they require electronic screening, or I guess Juan's good enough, stations, that sort of thing. Those of you that are kind of keeping up with City Hall know a little bit about what we're doing there, but this applies to all city buildings, all public buildings. One bill that does have an effect on us, it, and this one's been in the papers recently, is that the legislature finally did something with, with alcohol in grocery stores and liquor stores. And they're now going to allow grocery stores to sell up to six percent strength beer. The flip side of that is the kind of the bone that they throw in the liquor stores is that they're going to let them sell other things other than spirits and, and strong beer. They're going to let them sell party stuff and, and mixes and that sort of stuff, as long as it doesn't exceed twenty percent of their total gross revenue. This goes into effect next April. No, I'm sorry, two years, April 2019. So it's kind of got a long way out. There are some fiscal impacts that, on us. Right now, three-two beer is taxed with a sales tax, and then we get some benefit from that. Six percent beer, or strong beer, is, has no sales tax, but has a liquor enforcement tax that the state gets that we don't see any of. In prior, prior years when they've run this legislation, they have inserted what they call a hold harmless. I don't, I don't know exactly what that is, but according to the league, it was an attempt to try to protect cities from losing, if not all, at least the, the big part of that revenue. I think you can all see that it's probably likely, I'm a beer drinker, I, I wouldn't drink three-two beer if I had a choice between three-two and something stronger. I think the thought is that three-two beer is going to kind of be a dinosaur here pretty soon, and, and most everybody's going to be selling the strong beer. And that has the potential to, to have a revenue loss. The league is promising to try to get that into this bill during the veto session, but if not, they're also saying we have two more years, and they're going to work hard at that. So I'll try to keep an eye on that and keep you advised. There was a small change made to the Kansas Open Records Act, which limits what we can charge for copies to twenty-five cents a page. Right now, I think we have some paperwork where we try to charge more than that, but we don't have anything on our books that sets the rate. It's set by the city clerk, and so Daniella and I will work on getting this legal on that with the sort of things we hand out at the desk when somebody comes in to, to make an open records request. Some matters of general interest that remain pending and may or may not get addressed in the veto session are capers issues. Capers always seems to be an issue in the legislative session. One of the things that, that they're trying to deal with is how to deal with the issue of persons working after retirement, and how that affects their retirement, and what restrictions there might, or might not be. Another matter that might or might not be addressed in the veto session is the issue of medical marijuana. It's being put forth by proponents of the benefits of medical marijuana. So far, not a lot of action on that. And finally, there, just for general information, there were some changes in what I'll call the tax area. There was a proposal for a flat tax, and it's dead on arrival now. It didn't make it. And in fact, there was an adopted House bill that creates a four bracket state income tax from a, a low taxation rate of two-point-seven percent for incomes under fifteen thousand to up to six, almost six and a half percent for incomes over a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. The legislature also passed a bill that increases the portion of sales tax monies allocated to the state highway fund each year from sixteen and a quarter percent in 2019 to eighteen and a half percent by 2025. And finally, the state sales tax on food and food ingredients will be reduced from six-point-two-five percent as it stands to zero over a five-year period. Unless you have any questions, that's kind of where things stand right now. Again, I'll, I'll be back to kind of give you the wrap-up and maybe some more specifics sometime later in June.
Does anybody have any questions for Doug? No. Thank you, Doug. It was very informative. Next, we'll hear from our Director of Finance, Daniella Rivas.
Mayor and council, I'm going to make this brief. This is a, an update of our, where we are at as of the first quarter of 2017. We're doing this a little backwards. The 2016 audited financial statements and the audited report, we just wrapped up the audit, and that report should be done at the end of next month, so you will get an updated where we, where we left off at the end of last year. This is a little jump in 2017. I'm going to quickly discuss general fund revenue and expenditures and utility fund revenue and expenditures, since these are our, our two biggest funds. General fund revenue, the last quarter, ad valorem taxes are up four percent. This is over the last four, about four years. This falls right in line with the increase in assessed valuation, so we're right on, on target with general fund, with the ad valorem taxes. Sales tax? Sales taxes, lack of a better term, pretty stagnant. It's not decreasing, but it's not really increasing, maybe one to two percent over the last four years. Like Doug said, there's some changes that are going down that may, may affect our sales tax intake, but I'm hoping that new businesses coming in town may, may pump that up. Licenses and permits, biggest jump there. First quarter in 2016, I don't know if you can see that, that was quite an increase. We had a lot of activity last year with the IRB projects. Those brought in a lot of fees, including Masco, Thermo King, and Air Capital. But we are up, taking those out of the equation, we are up this year, and that can be attributed to our increase in fees and new homes. Those were the biggest jumps. I'm very happy to say that we're doing, we're right on budget, or if, if anything, we're doing a little bit better. Any questions?
Not seeing any yet.
Okay. I'm sorry about the quality of this picture. This, this was in the agenda packet. First quarter expenditures, like Doug was saying, taking into consideration House Bill 2088, staff has been very prudent the first quarter with their operating budgets. That being said, this may change over the course of the year with the new City Hall. The increase you see in the first quarter compared to previous first quarters equates seventy-five to eighty percent equates to the, to personnel costs. There was a three percent increase that was approved early in 2016 for the city as a whole, and a police department wage increase in late 2016. Now, both of these increases were covered by salary savings and a health insurance savings. So these, although not extra expenses, that they will be covered by cash savings. And we are close to being fully staffed, so the majority of the increases you see on the screen is personnel costs. Any questions?
Not seeing any yet.
And these are budgeted personnel costs.
All right.
All right, utility fund. This is our baby. Our utility fund is doing pretty well. We've had some wet days in the first quarter, but our increase in revenue is the increase in our, I think we approved in February, increase in rates. New home builds and commercial water use is attributed to that increase. We budgeted pretty conservatively last year. It did not budget for that two percent increase. That being said, that two percent increase is a, is a plan to leave that in the utility fund to build up those cash reserves for future infrastructure projects. Utility revenue is looking pretty good this first quarter. Utility expenditures, I want to point out that the water expenditures, if you see that increase, that's attributed to, to several things. We did start some manhole projects. That's a, a small increase, a small portion of that increase. The largest majority of that, of that increase in water from sixteen to seventeen is a City of Wichita water purchase. We had a broken meter there for a while, and it didn't get fixed for about six months, and so there were some catch-up billing, and City of Wichita and Park City had to figure out a way to get that billing right, and we did, and that bill wasn't paid until 2017. So there, that might be skewed a little. If you take that, it was about a fifty thousand dollar bill. If you take that bill in seventeen and move it to sixteen, we're right, right on target in water expenses. Sewer expenses, as you can see, 2017 is down quite a bit. That's just timing. Our debt payments are paid monthly, and they weren't paid, they were paid a couple days after the end of the month, so. Water revenue and sewer revenue and expenditures are looking pretty good in our utility fund. There's pretty, I'm pretty happy with how things are looking right now. Just a, a quick reminder, both funds are looking pretty good. We do plan on revving up our expenditures as the year progresses with our new City Hall, so I will keep you updated every quarter going forward. Also, our CIP is also being drawn down at, as we build our new City Hall, something to keep in mind when we are raided through the bond companies. They like to see that the general fund and the CIP funds with reserve, cash reserve, something to keep in mind to build those back up as we draw them down. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Daniella? Thank you very much. That was everything for staff reports this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
John?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to new business. Under new business, item A, we have consider a resolution of the governing body of the City of Park City, Kansas authorizing the execution of landlords' subordination, or yes, subordination and access agreement relating to taxable industrial revenue bonds for the Tech Aerospace Project and authorizing any further action related thereto. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is another one of those kind of housekeeping things that, that we're asked to do because we are the landlord and, and under this industrial revenue bond. But what's happening here is that Tech is acquiring some additional equipment. They're not doing it with any IRV funds, and by the terms of our agreement with them, with the original industrial revenue bond issue, this additional equipment is not part of the project, so it wouldn't be anything we would have security in, in the, or the bondholders would in the event that there was any kind of default in the future. So, so what this is asking is, it's, it's, the lender is asking that this, that this city subordinate its interest in this equipment to the bank's interest, security interest, and then number two, that the city as landlord grant permission in the event that there is some sort of default in the agreement between the bank, lender, and Tech about this equipment, that we, we allow them access to the facility to essentially repossess it. That's what it comes to. This has no financial impact on the city, and I would recommend that you adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Tom?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Is there a second? John?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Hi.
George Glover?
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Joe Pumphrey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that motion passes 7-0?
That is Resolution 941-2017.
That brings us to item B, which is consider an ordinance amending sections 15-103 and 15-218 of the municipal code of the City of Park City, Kansas, relating to the manner of providing a delinquency and termination notice and connection, disconnection, and reconnection charges to customers served by the city's water utility and repealing the original of said sections 15-103 and 15-218. Doug, did you want to start first with that?
Let me just say what we've done, and then maybe Daniella and Jack can explain the reasons for it. There are two changes here. In 103, the real change is right there in the first paragraph where I've expanded what our ordinance provides for the notification of delinquency to something beyond just US mail. It's now US mail, electronic mail, or telephonic notification. And then Daniella and/or Jack can talk about how that helps us. Those other changes that you see under subsection B are really just, again, when I start doing these things, I start reading the way it reads, and that's just kind of grammatical stuff. But I've made the word customer consistent, and I've kind of made the grammar of those four bullet points under subsection B just read a little bit more smoothly. The second change is on 15-218, and that is an increase in the disconnect fee that we charge when we have to disconnect service and then reconnect from $35 to $70.
Okay. So before Daniella kicked this to you, I'll bring up that second part of 15-218, because we were discussing about this. This was my recommendation that we bump up this disconnect charge because we have so many late payments. The city spends so much time tied up going out and shutting people off and turning people back on. It really felt like the $35 was apparently not big enough for people to be concerned with making sure they get their water bill on time. So we average 70, sometimes 90, disconnects every month. So that means we're preparing all the paperwork, sending everybody from the water department out to go out and shut off all the water meters. And then we have to have them go back out to make sure the next morning nobody's turned them on that hasn't done it. And for the most part, I think we're looking at 90% of those people come in and pay within that day or the very next day. So we're doing a whole lot of work just going out and shutting people off and turning them back on. So what I asked Daniella to do was to look at our local municipalities surrounding us, and let's see what they're charging. There are some, there's one community in particular who's charged $150 for doing a shut-off and disconnect. We kind of looked, and we looked at the average. The average is probably about $60, and I recommended going a little bit over that on that. One of the things that we do do that other communities don't is we have a deposit on the meter, and we have a low hookup fee. And other communities don't do a deposit, but then have a higher hookup fee. So just kind of weighing that out, I kind of thought being a little bit on the top end. Now, one thing to think of is, we try to want to make sure that people that are already struggling to get their bill paid, that we're not putting another burden on them to try to get it paid. But what I want you to focus on is 90 to 95% of the people coming in and pay that day or the next day. So the majority of the people have the funds, they're just not being responsible about paying it. And then we're wasting man-hours, both in the office and out in the field, utilities, I mean, vehicles, gas, running around, driving all over town, and it pulls them off of jobs that they could be doing. So I just want to put a bigger discouragement into not disconnecting and reconnecting that we could get the bills paid on time. So Daniella, I'll let you go back and kind of start from any other discussion we had.
The change in section 15-103 on expanding the ordinance to provide delinquency notices is, the change is coming from a kind of a movement in administration to try and go paperless. In code, our financial software will send out disconnect notice phone calls for us at a third of the cost. Right now, we mail paper notices. For the last four months, we've been actively asking customers, we've put it on Facebook, we've put it on our sign to have citizens update their phone number with us. They will receive a disconnect notice phone call. After those phone calls have been made in a 24-hour notice, we receive a report of anyone who did not get a phone call. Those citizens who did not get a phone call will be notified via a letter to please update their phone number with us. So we will actively and be very proactive and try to get everyone to update their phone numbers with us so that we can notify everyone who is on a disconnect list. We will also be trying to use email to try and get ahold of customers who we can't via a phone call. To add on Mayor Mann's reason for the increase on the disconnect fee, I just wanted to add, we looked at the last 24 months of disconnects, and it was about 75 to 80% of those customers who are being disconnected have never used, never, and they have never used the extension program we have. We will extend your payment 15 extra days. If you just call and ask, you have three a year, and 80% of the customers who are disconnected are not calling. So this would maybe push them to call. So, thank you.
Really just to add to this, the change is on both sections of this is just to streamline operations of what we're doing. We looked at being more efficient with the phone calls, cutting costs. If we raise the disconnect fee and hopefully deter people from just, you know, being late with that, maybe the $70 sting might cause on-time payments, and it'll save us more time in the office and out in the field doing disconnects. John?
I'm sorry, you may have said this already, but I'm just wondering, like, the people that are, most of them that are getting disconnected, are they not, I mean, are these, any of them that we have on the auto pay that the bank draft's not clearing, or just people that are not on the auto pay and not paying?
No, these are not auto pay, not paying.
I just wondered this. What if we did this, like, waive the disconnect fee if they'll sign up for the auto pay? Because to me, or even give them half, go ahead and raise a rate, but give them half if they do the auto pay. Because to me, I don't want to just fix it today. I want to eliminate it later. I just feel like that would really promote, or I guess, help us eliminate having to continue to do this. And still raise the rate, too. We'll go ahead and double it, but we'll leave it at half this time if you sign up for auto pay. Now, we get another problem if that auto pay doesn't clear, because they're still going to get shut off, but...
Right. They'll be shut off, so they'll get the disconnect fee, and they'll also have overdraft or charges from us, maybe their bank. So that could be, yeah, that could be a possibility.
I mean, I guess I would just recommend that. We raise that to what you're recommending, unless they sign up for auto pay.
Okay. That's a good thing. Tom?
I have, this is a significant increase for those that don't pay. And I have a little concern about it coming up on the agenda tonight, and us discussing and passing it tonight without having any input from the public. You could say they saw it last Friday when it was published. I mean, we put out our agenda, but it really doesn't give anybody an opportunity to provide any information back, so...
I guess I'm a little confused by that, because if you pay on time, this never affects you. So it'd kind of be like, you know, municipality having a speeding ticket, and then, well, you didn't, okay, what the fine was going to be. It's just, I don't know, it's kind of strange to ask about, because it's meant to deter people so that we can eliminate some work.
Well, and I understand what we're trying to do, but I got to back out of it.
Okay. Doug?
I was going to just comment, if the council were inclined to go with what John said, my recommendation would be to leave the ordinance as it is, and then administratively offer a $35 rebate when somebody signs up successfully for auto pay, as opposed to trying to write that into the ordinance.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Save myself work.
You know, I think John brought up a good point that we should consider. I mean, we tried to go to the electronic statements, which has been pretty successful. I think we're close to 1,700 people that are receiving that. So that's just over half. That streamlines some costs in the office. It would be nice to get more participation on that. But I do like John's offer of providing an incentive to get somebody to sign up into the electronic payment, especially when we have repeat people that maybe are just putting that off or placed it underneath a stack of papers and forgot to get to it in time.
Or don't know about it.
Right. Daniella?
I wanted to make two comments. First one, Tom, on the, my concern with the increasing the disconnect fee at first was that we would be hurting customers who are already not paying their bill on time for whatever reason. Right. And that's why we, I asked one of our staff members, our utility billing clerk, she went and spent eight hours, a whole day, on going back and hand calculating 24 months' worth of disconnect data. And she gathered that and went back to see how many people actually called and asked for an extension or a contract. And I will add, you are allowed up to three extensions in a year. You also have a contract. So if you've exhausted the three extensions, we will do a contract that you will sign that states you will pay by a certain date. So essentially, you have four extensions a year. So over two years, these individuals were not using any of these. That, it became less concerning for me in offering this as a possibility, knowing that it really isn't, the majority, not everyone, but the majority, it wasn't an issue that they weren't even able to pay. This is an assumption, but that they were just, that they weren't communicating with us. So we really want to push that communication, which brings me to the second point I wanted to make. I would like to ask, I'm not sure why it didn't get into the item. I would like to make it effective in the July billing to give customers, to promote, not promote, to let customers know this will be increasing and make them aware, and not just automatically make this effective tomorrow. So we would like to push it out a couple months and let, you know, put it on our board up front, put it on Facebook, put it on our website, and let everyone know this will be increasing, and push the ACH option, and remind everyone that bills go out on the first, and they're due on the 15th.
Thanks, Daniella. Does anybody else have any? John?
I agree with John. I think that was the first thing that came to my mind was, you know, if they're already in the office, and we're face-to-face with them, why not try to push them to having it automatic? So I like the idea of the incentive. And I also agreed with Tom about making these increases, you know, not ever discussing it in a meeting before, and then making the increase. But I think if we did the incentive, and if we gave until July, I think it'd be fine. So that being said, I think I'd make a motion that we approve the ordinance as amended. Do I need to read it off, or?
No, you're fine.
With it effective in July, the July billing. And then, I don't know if I need to add to the motion that...
And then the staff would have, would adopt a policy to offer a $35 rebate?
Yes.
With the successful sign up of direct deposit, or?
Yes.
Automatic billing?
That's my motion.
Doug, is that okay?
Yes, I might have spoken and used the word rebate. It's a refund of one half of the disconnect fee.
Okay.
So we're still going to have to encourage people to sign up that are good payers, and they're not getting this benefit, I guess. But then again, they aren't getting the penalty either. So it would just be for people who have a disconnect fee that sign up, they get the $35 refunded to them.
Okay. And that's how you understand it?
Yes, sir.
John, did you want a second?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have any discussion?
No.
Melvin?
I just wondered, how many of these people come in here for late? Do they pay in cash, or do they write a check for that? I mean, do some of them not have checking accounts, or?
I can't tell you the percentage. I mean, it's a mix. We receive credit cards. We push for checks just because the credit card's charge a fee, but most people try to come in and pay with cash or check.
I'm just wondering, do some of these maybe not have an account or something, or checking account? And signing up would be kind of...
I would say from my, and I've only been here about 16 months, but from my experience is that it tends to be the same 50% plus people who just forget. So we have a solid group that knows when they're going to be disconnected and try to, you know, try to work that.
So you feel like it's more than they forget about than they can't afford it to?
It could be a mix. I'm not quite sure. But I do know that those people, the people who are being disconnected are not calling us for options. So this may, knowing I'm going to be charged $70, maybe that incentive to, I'm going to call the city and see what they can do for me.
Thank you. John?
I did want to ask one thing. I'm sorry, I should have asked this earlier, but Daniella, I mean, from what the motion is and the way we're going with it, I just want to make sure you're okay with what that is. Was that, sound like that would solve the problem that we're trying to go after?
Oh, I think the, giving the incentive for the ACH, I think it's a great, I never thought of that. So that's a great idea. I would, just personal opinion, I would almost say we'll waive the $70 fee. We'll waive the whole fee, sign up for ACH, once you've successfully paid for your utility bill over, I don't know, maybe a three months. Because it could be successful for one month and then back to square one. So that would be administratively not the best. So the first month would be fine. So either $35 or $70, but I think it's a great idea.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item C, which is, discuss the purchase of electronic water meters. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom Jones brought this subject up four or five years ago, I think. Was it Tom? End of looking into that, there's been a...
That's an ordinance.
Hey. Did I skip something?
No, but I did.
Oh, want me to go back?
Yeah, we need to go back. So Carrie just pointed out to me that that was an ordinance, which requires a roll call. All right. So Doug forgot to shock my chair over here. So Daniella, would you call the roll on item P?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones? George Capps? Joe Pumphrey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
All right. And that ordinance is 7-0?
That is ordinance number 1022-2017.
Thank you, Carrie. All right. Jack, we're back to you about water meters, electronic water meters.
Okay. I don't know if you can see that. Hopefully in your packet, there's a sheet similar to that. The goal here was to try to, over a period of time, eliminate the need for somebody to physically go out and read a water meter. Currently, we're spending somewhere around 47,000-plus, reading meters, going out, rechecking them, and so forth and so on. And the goal of looking into this is so that it can be read by the water clerk off her computer. Nobody has to go out in the field, unless we find, I do have a malfunction, and maybe once in a while, we would do that. We looked at two companies, primarily in this, Metron and Mueller. Mueller is the company that we've been using with our handhelds before. Back when Tom brought it up, we looked at buying their system, but the cost of antennas and things like that was pretty high. And it looks like the cost of that is still pretty high. If you look, there on the bottom there, the cost of meters aren't too bad, but to, you have to... If you look, there on the bottom there, the cost of meters aren't too bad, but to, you have to buy new lids. They charge you ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars for a setup fee, which doesn't provide you anything except project management and, and they do a study of where to put these collectors. Collectors are thirty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Then annual maintenance on the collectors is twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. There's ongoing cost. Now, what that is, is they'll put, say, collectors on our water tanks, on some of our streetlights. I think they were talking about seven different locations within the city. They'd put these up and if any of them failed, it would shut down the system on that particular area. And of course, the maintenance fee, they would come out and repair it or whatever, but it might take a few days for them to get out to that. The Metron meter, it does not have collectors. The meters themselves will send a signal to Verizon, to the internet, and then we would bring it off of the internet and get the meter reading. I've got it set up. I did Metron because it was the easiest one, but each of these have a ability to do an app that the customer could look into and see what their own water bill is. And there, there's some neat functions with that. And let me real quick get this off of here. And. They're gonna make me sign in again. Everybody, close your eyes. You're not supposed to hit password. Computer's a little slow tonight. So far, we've installed, we've installed ten of these meters, just to try them out. This is the screen that the water clerk would see and has different account numbers on it. So these right here are primarily, new homes contractor have installed these meters, so there's not a lot of usage on them. But I'm gonna kinda show you how some of this will work. Let me, let me pick one here. I'll probably pick one that doesn't have much water usage, but. Okay. Yep, I knew I'd pick the one that, pick one that that's been working here. Okay, here, here's one here. As you can see here, it shows the maximum water flow rate. You know, if you're into that type of thing, and we do have some residents that are, they would understand that and would probably enjoy that a little bit. It gives them consumption statistics, what their peak rate is, what their peak daily rate is and their total consumption. Also, if you look and see the circle, this is total consumption, but if they have a leak, it will also pick the leak up and, and send a notification to the homeowner that they have a leak. Here's the deal where, I've got sent up here, billing information. Come on. Why'd I have to pick one that's? No, let me get back up here. I had the big idea of doing this tonight to show you, but. Okay, water loss. Yeah, it's doing something weird here. This one here. Computer's acting up. You can go here and it graphs, graphs at what time of the day you had such an amount of water flow or whatever. It also will tell you if you have irrigation system, how much water you've used irrigating your yard. So I just got this today and I'm, haven't been trained on it, but it's fairly simple. I'm kind of stumbling around, but if I had one that had a lot of water usage, it's, this thing would light up like you wouldn't believe. So that's Metron's deal. Also Mueller has one similar to that. Back over here again. If you look at the numbers up there or on your sheet, if you put in the Mueller system, the first year, it'd be an expense of two hundred thou, two hundred thousand, over two hundred thousand dollars. And that's because you have to pay for the collectors and everything. The meter cost of Metron is eighty-three thousand, three hundred. Now, in order to balance this out between Mueller and Metron, you'd have to take that excess funds and see how many years in the future it would take to break them out even, and that would be about six years. Year two, if you base it on the number of meters, a hundred and forty meters a year, Mueller would be cheaper the second year per meter than Metron. But in year after we retrofit the meters we already have, then Metron would be the cheaper. Now, I asked my, my utility staff which system, they've looked at both of these extensively and which system they would prefer, and was it the Metron system? Now, I'm not gonna ask you to approve tonight necessarily the expenditure here on this. If you, unless you're satisfied with it, we could have the Metron people come in and do a, on a special meeting and, and show us some other things about the system if you want.
So, so Jack, I know you've been working on this for a while and we've really been playing around either way. And we felt like that we wanted the Metron system for a while. And that's one reason why I went ahead and authorized the purchase of the ten meters. We were getting low, we wanted to try them out. They've been working well, we're successful of it. But can you, what other capabilities does it have other than just sending in the meter reads? I mean, there's some other things in the future, and I think it's important to cover that.
Well, the, the problem, like she was saying, we have seventy people that we have to turn off. They have a device, both companies have a device or will have a device that you can put on the meter and cut them off, but they're quite expensive. They're almost as much as the meter. And for example, Metron to, to get the device to, no, that's a retrofit.
Metron.
This, yeah. Metron shut off is, is, yeah, that's what it is.
Jack, I think, I thought Metron was in October. They weren't quite ready with that yet.
Yeah, Metron is. Mueller, I thought it had a price on it. It's almost as much for the shut off capability as it is for the meter, several hundred dollars. So I would think that you would only put those on ones that are consistently being shut off. And you don't, just 'cause somebody gets shut off, you don't, although you'd like to be able to do it, it's just not cost effective. Now, the reason we picked a hundred and forty meters, this is what we typically come to you every year and ask you to approve. In this particular case, we already have six hundred meters out in the field that would have to be retrofitted. Either one, either way, we'd have to retrofit them. And we would do those at a hundred a year, 'cause it, there's like six hundred of them. Now, I asked both companies what it would cost just to put in a full blown system, do every meter, everything. And they're talking about a million, five hundred thousand dollars. I assume that you probably wouldn't want to go that route. Okay? So what I'm basically saying is we'll trudge along and, and we'll keep on the method that we're already doing. We'll get back and retrofit those older meters and keep moving ahead. And eventually, somewhere down the line, we'll have every meter fixed.
All right, so one of the things we talked about was it would be important that we do block sections when we do it. So it would be silly that we go down a meter reader's path and do one house there and one house there, and then we really didn't solve anything. So we thought about targeting specific areas and going after that to try to eliminate maybe that one area and then we gradually branch out and do other parts of the city and just keep expanding with it. So really, what we want to see is, one, do you have a desire to do this? If you want to still think about it, we can still think about it. If you wanted to vote on it and go ahead and pick that tonight, we could do that. And if you wanted the company to actually come out and do some type of demonstration and show you what they have in a special meeting, we can do that as well. So it's really open for discussion to see what you think. Tom?
I'd like to exercise them, have them come out and tell us about it. Let us see what they got, what they got in the pipeline. The reason I brought this up in the first place is we got, the readers miss meters. They misread the meters, so you gotta go back. They have late reads and then they're weather related. And then you've gotta have somebody do this all the time. You have one quit, you gotta find somebody else to come back and do it. But I was getting phone calls for a while because people would get their meter read late one month and go over their minimum, and the next month, they'd be way under the minimum and the next month, they'd be over. So they were constantly working their bill and they were trying to manage their water rates. So that's what got me on it in the first place. And then at the time, for a million dollars, you could push a button down here and read all the meters at the same time, and you'd go out and fix the ones that it didn't read. And so I think we ought to look at it myself.
The Metron reads the meter every five minutes. And once, once a day, it sends it in to be recorded. The, our, our goal is to work on, we have books, in other words, certain areas. And we have two meter readers and they read, one meter reader reads this set of books, the other one reads that set of books. We want to eliminate one meter reader. Another problem we have is there's some meters that are put in behind fences. A lot of commercial meters, they're gonna be far more expensive than this, but, so they're not easily accessible and stuff, and so we'd like to get those changed out as well. So it, it's, you know, I'd like to see them all done at one time, but it's just something that we just can't, I don't think at this time, we can afford to do, but we could be working towards it. And then maybe sometime in the future, we'll come into some money or something and be able to finish them up, but.
Yeah, and you know, one thing in areas that we're currently expanding, you know, we got three, four different developments right now that we've done specials on. You know, these were the areas that we could go ahead and install. And then we're not creating a, a new set of books or adding two books that are already out there.
Also, we don't pay for those forty, you'll see forty-one inch meters. Those are going into new houses, and so they pay a hundred percent of the meter cost. So the city don't pick any of that up.
Right. Okay, Jim?
How many years would it take to change out the city?
It's about thirty-three hundred, and so you're talking about, we already got six hundred that we'd have to retrofit, so I don't know. You, you could figure about a hundred and forty divided into?
Yeah.
Yeah, it.
Long time.
Long time.
But it, so the initial year being much higher on Mueller might aver, is, could, there's plenty of time for that to average out over time, right? So then the second part is just, okay, now we're talking about a long period of time and if, did you get a sense for which company is the one that would stick around the longest and be offering, we'd hate to start with one company and they go bankrupt or they go?
Mueller's been around for a hundred years.
Mueller has?
Dallas just bought two hundred and fifty thousand Metron meters.
Okay.
So.
So your points are both pretty strong. You don't, I mean, there's no way to predict the future. I was just curious if you had a sense for that?
No, I don't. I know that our guys, I think Jerry and them, we're, we're leaning towards Metron.
Okay.
You know, when you start putting up these antennas all over town and?
And we've really been happy with the cellular service that, that's being provided now through that, going through Verizon, which is a large, you know, a major cellular network. So we've been pretty happy with what we've seen out of them so far.
Mueller has to go through an internet service too, but we're, we're getting charged in that twenty-six thousand dollars per year cost for that service.
Strikes me the one using the cell phone coverage is, that's, I would think would be the most current technology.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, Jim?
Yeah.
Carrie?
I guess, you know, it's, my question is on the eighty-three thousand from Metron, that includes the Verizon coverage for this, right?
Correct.
'Cause I'm assuming, you know, if it's me, if it's being read every five minutes, that's pretty consistent cellular service, so.
Yeah, it's, it's all inclusive in their meter. That's why their meters is more expensive.
Right. So their, their contract with Verizon is in that part, portion of the?
Yeah, I was a little bit concerned about, let's say their contracts up with Verizon in seven years, what's gonna happen? And next thing I know, Verizon was in my office saying, don't worry about it.
Right. I mean, that's like almost an always on situation with a cellular, so, okay.
Okay. Melvin?
Did I hear you say that you spend about forty-seven thousand dollars in labor doing this?
No, as we do it right now, it does.
Okay.
Because what happens is they'll misread, I've been on them a little bit, so their misreads are improving a little bit. But, so they go out and misread them. We send a bill out. The citizen gets irate because his bill is ten times more than what it should be. Calls the office, we say, oops, okay, well, we send the guy out. And a lot of times, we may have ninety misreads, and so it takes our crew that has to do other things, a full week to go back out and reread all these meters and?
Well, what I'm saying is that labor would cut into the price of these meters, so?
Yes, yes, it would.
So it looks like about half of it there, so?
But it's gonna take a few years to eat that up like Jim was, was talking about.
Well, yeah.
Right, 'cause you're, I mean, if, if we did this at the, you know, with Metron, with, which is what staff would, would prefer, we're, we're only talking about a limited amount of meters we're doing, so, I mean, you're only gonna put a small dent in that forty-six thousand that we're currently at, but kinda like what Jim was saying, long term, I mean, you'll eventually see the forty-six thousand shrink if we were to pick a company and run with them. That number draft, coming down annually with, with growth, you know, with growth, it could increase cost if we don't do anything, because we could potentially add more meter readers to what we currently have and just create more of a problem as the city expands. Jack?
Danielle just informed me, is it last month? The month of April, we had two hundred and thirty misreads and re-reads. So our crew didn't get very much work done, except reading meters.
Well, I think it looks like it's gonna pay for itself after a while, and I don't know why Metron, if the, if the staff is liking the thing, what they're gonna change our minds about, I mean?
The, I think the public, you know, not everybody, but I think a lot of the public will like to get the app. And a lot of them come up and want history of their reads, where they can do, use the app and go do it themselves without? and go do it themselves without interrupting our gals and stuff, and...
And some of the big, some of the, really, the, the perks of that is the, the leak notification, which I think is huge, you know? Um, you know, we talk about growing green or conserving resources that we have. You know, if somebody's got a toilet that's running in their house and they're unaware of it, or a, a sink, this is gonna point it out to them that, hey, you might need to check, there's a problem somewhere in the, in your house. So, I mean, there's a lot of benefits to it. And I think as we continue to grow, that choosing, um, an option like this would be wise investment for us in our future.
I think, uh, you know, we're going through a lot of other expenses right now, but I think in, in a few years, uh, looking at a long-term debt, um, it's gonna get better, and then you might choose at that point then to go ahead and, and have the rest of them done. I just didn't feel like at this point with, uh, everything we've got on our plate right now that that'd be something that you'd wanna consider. But you can if you want to.
Yeah, and, and we're...
I don't think you will, though.
We're completely open to that. Now, we've talked about, um, maybe bringing them in to a, to a special meeting to try to explain this, and I, I think Melvin was going this, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know how much else they're gonna tell us about what the system already does. But what I do think would be valuable is if we could get some type of, uh, a video clip or something from them explaining the app or the website that we would put on Channel Seven that would help inform the public on how to use this, this accessibility to their water usage. And I think that would be a wise, wise thing for us to do, so. Gary?
Yeah, uh, looking at both of these and, you know, looking at the setup costs plus the maintenance of those, uh, stations over time, uh, you know, electronics don't last forever. So, we know that there's gonna be a recurring cost, uh, not only in the efficiency, but in the replacement of the electronic collectors. So, you know, having that all wireless where the carriers handling their own cell towers, and that's all you're worrying about because you don't have to worry about anything as far as a collection, uh, equipment. And, you know, I see that both of them have a ten-year warranty, but the, the warranty to replace a meter is a lot less than replacing the collector, I'm guessing.
Right.
So, uh, I, I definitely concur that, uh, not only is it a better technology, but it's probably gonna be cheaper in the long run. So, okay, Tom?
I was gonna say, as we look at this, Jack's talking about doing a hundred and forty a year or something like that, but we may want to do a benefit analysis and look at an area where, uh, we have a lot of misreads or a lot of...
That's how we came up with that number, Tom.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying that if you look at an area, it might be a benefit to reduce that. You can get rid of the labor cost, put, do the whole area and use the cost as an offset. So, we could look at that somewhere down the road and maybe doing more than that. And then pick areas where the meters are far apart and, uh, cut down on labor travel time.
We might sporadically, let, let's say, for example, you know, we've picked out a book that I, I don't want to say publicly where this particular area is, but we have a lot of trouble, issues. And, uh, but, but, but there are in other books, some other one or two or three or four like that. We might, if we, we see something developing, we might go and put a meter on, on those. But at this point, we, we're just trying to take the worst of the worst, and this right here, I think, will pretty much cover it.
And I, I think one thing too, we could look at, and we've discussed this, I don't know how we'd break that down, but maybe a, a citizen would have a desire for this meter and may want to pay for it, maybe at a reduced cost or something, um, to kinda get buy-in on it. And we throw this in, this might be something I might be interested in, and I'd be like, well, I'll pay for the new meter if I got this technology. So, they, I think they talked about also charging for the app, um, a minimal fee to help offset the costs. I, I don't know if we want to go that direction. I like the idea of having the free app and the free information at your fingertips. Um, but we could do something where maybe, uh, a citizen that would have a desire for this would be willing to pay for half of the meter cost, um, if they can do it. There's some other options we could explore on how could we expand the growth of getting these installed. George?
Yeah, I like the, the Metron capabilities. We haven't had any problem with, we used to when we first came to Park City about meter reading, but we haven't had much of any problem the last five years. We had some issues at first.
You've been blessed.
Yeah. But I like the, the idea of doing it in block sections as far as, uh, upgrading those systems and, and... But the Metron is what the staff wants and, and really likes. I would, uh, be in favor of going with that. I also like the app capability for folks to actually see what they're using and, uh, being able to keep track of that. Thank you.
Okay, so we've, we've really had a lot of good discussion, but we need some clear direction on, you know, do you want us to go ahead and purchase and, and start a plan? Do we want to have some more discussion on it? What, whatever, where do we want to go? Gary?
Uh, in, in the event that we decide to, uh, go ahead and start this, uh, what do we have in terms of budget to handle eighty-three thousand dollars right now?
Oh, I think we're okay, uh, annually, we do, we do this annually, the hundred meters, it's usually sixty-six thousand. So, we're only adding maybe twenty grand.
We have, we could, so if we decided tonight, say, per se, that, uh, we wanted to go ahead with it, it's something we could do right away?
Yeah, we can use some of our utility...
Utility surplus funds.
Surplus funds.
To help cover the cost.
Well, in that event, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we give staff the authorization to proceed with the, uh, purchase and installation of the, uh, hundred and forty meters and, uh, start the, uh, ball rolling with, uh, Metron.
Okay. Melvin?
I'll second that, uh, I think it's a good deal. It's, uh, kinda get the contractors too, with the new houses on board to get started on this and...
Yeah, so as we continue, you know, we're already up in houses over what we were last year, so as we continue, well, and we've already got, um, a handful of these already out there being used, and we've been happy with what we've seen so far. So, I think this is a good decision. If, uh, the motion passes...
We're actually only spending twenty thousand dollars, and we're gonna save that and labor costs possibly, so...
So, uh, if the motion passes, we'll, we'll go back and see if we can get some type of training or some type of clip from that company that we could put on Channel Seven or, um, something so that those people that have access to that can learn how to use that. Tom?
I'm glad to see this is finally happening. It's something that's been kicked around for quite some time, and, and it, as labor market changes and stuff, it's something we need to step into and start doing, so, um, it's a good thing.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven-zero. And that brings us to item D, which is consider bids for the mowing the city-owned lots. As you all know, we're down to Bear Hill left. You have two, um, two, uh, bids in your packet. Um, the lowest bid was who we used last year, and we didn't have any issues with them. I don't know if Jack's got anything else added, it's pretty clear-cut, and I think we'd probably want to go with the low bidder on this one. Tom?
I've got a question about the bids. Uh, the first bid has Lot Five marked out with zero in it, with a total of two fifty. And the second bid has Lot Five bid in there, and it's included in the dollars.
Just because lots sold. Just because lots sold.
Lots sold.
It is sold, so the second bid would be two hundred dollars in.
Yeah. The, the, the company that bid the two fifty is also a realtor. So, he knew that Lot Forty was sold, this other guy didn't.
Okay. I just wanted clarification because there were, there was an issue there.
Okay. Melvin?
I make a motion that we approve, uh, JB Landscaping for, what, two hundred or two twenty?
Just for the, uh, for the, for the bid presented for the Bear Hill Estates mowing.
For the bid, uh, presented to Bear Hill Estates mowing.
Okay, John?
I'll second.
Okay, did you have any discussion?
I'm just trying to figure the, the amount, so if one of them's, is it ten lots or nine lots with the one selling?
Should be ten.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, it's ten.
Ten.
So, shouldn't, shouldn't that be two hundred then?
Yes, because that's what we were talking, that he didn't know that lot wasn't sold, so as we sell them, then they no longer have that, so, okay.
For clarification, I have a question, and that is, we're bidding at lot price, not total price, right?
Lot price.
Lot price.
Yes.
I just wanted clarification for voting.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to item E, which is consider bids for furnishing the new administration center. Jack?
I hope when we move, I can, I'll have to take that with us, put it that way. We get down here. Okay, in your packet. I didn't get it on the slide here, but it's in your packet here. Uh, the furniture bids, let me explain to you how I did this. I only asked for bids for companies that had the state contract, okay? And there's two companies that have the state contract, Office Plus and John Marshall. They each have, have the state contract. Office Plus is a Park City business up on Broadway, and they're located where the, let's see, what's the...
Foods.
The old Don Hatton building.
The old Don Hatton building, up in that area. That's Office Plus, and, and John Marshall's in Wichita. Office Plus sells Han Furniture. Sales Mayline and Continental, which is a lower-grade, uh, uh, furniture manufacturer. The, for example, the, uh, uh, just on the administration part, Office Plus, the retail value was two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Because of the state contract and Han's discounts, it got it down to around eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is almost a forty percent, not sixty percent discount, which is quite, quite good. So, I would recommend that you select Office Plus at a hundred and twenty-eight, six, sixty-two, seventy-six.
And I think there's some things we need to point out here that are good. So, I think the Han had a lifetime warranty on the, on the furniture. Um, it's a Park City business with Office Plus. The other part of this cost also includes move-in, setup, and we don't have to do anything, which is another, uh, perfect thing for us. They'll, they'll bring everything in, put it together and stage it and set it up for us. So, I want to make sure we got those things pointed out.
Also...
I just had a question. Do, do we already know what the cost is gonna be to do the whole entire building?
That's it.
Um, uh, chairs, desks?
That's what this is. This is, this is council chambers, chairs, everything.
That's what I want to know, because you just thrown a price out, but you're not saying this includes this, this, this.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, it's, it's about twenty-five pages.
But generally speaking, it, it, the furniture and stuff like that.
Right. They went through the, the police department, went through both companies, showed them what they, they needed. Uh, uh, we did the same thing on the administration side. That's the reason why there's a police and administration, uh, to tell you what the breakout of, of each are.
That should cover everything.
Well, the only thing is offices that aren't man-used, not part of this. There was no point in the, go ahead and pay for furniture we were not using right now. Plus, we talked last time, we do have some furniture that's in good shape that will be moving over into some of those offices. So, that is not included in here. This would be all occupied spaces that we will be utilizing, um, within the building.
And if you're, if you have some fondness for your chair, we'll make you a good deal on it.
I do like the chair, Jack. I do like the chair, thanks.
Yeah, the, the big, the big deal is color, uh, and, uh, this, we have to select the color and, and... So, we're looking at probably black on the chairs or something unless somebody says something other, so...
All right, Jim?
I think this is a win-win. You get a, you got the low-cost provider, they're gonna do the work for us, and the business stays local. So, I would move that we would approve the, uh, bid with Office Plus for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents to furnish the new administration center.
From the capital improvement.
From the capital improvement fund.
Thank you. Melvin?
I was just gonna ask where...
You want a second for discussion?
I'll second, yes.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask where the funds come from, so...
Okay.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven-zero. The next item on the, on the agenda is item F, which is consider quotes for a switch and sonic point, access points for the new administration center at a cost of six thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and five cents from the capital improvement fund. So, one of the things we've been working on, um, through the IT department is we planned, and, and the building consists of all the cabling and everything we needed, but once we get to where the switch stops in the building, it's our responsibility for everything after that on what it connects to. So, what we've done is we've identified a couple of pieces of equipment that we need, um, to support the IT and the racks and the communication within the building. Um, so, the, um, we need a new switch in there, so another port box. And then, we need the, um, sonic point, access, wireless points in the, in the building. So, in the building, they're already set up for eleven. Three are already being provided, but because of the size of the building, we need more access points so that we can have Wi-Fi signal strong throughout the building. So, this was an additional cost. And basically, we'll bring it to you for approval so that we can go ahead and get this stuff planned, so the IT side of the building will be functioning well when we move in.
The switch, uh, sends the power to the cameras. So, if we don't buy the switch, we don't get power to the cameras, okay?
Yeah, so that was one of the things. So, we did the upgraded ethernet cable, which will also power the cameras. This switch will make everything more streamlined where it, you plug in your ethernet cable and provide power to the, to the cameras as well. Gary?
I'll make a motion that we approve the quote, uh, for the switch and sonic, uh, point wireless access points of the new administration center for a cost of sixty-three, eighty-three, oh, five from capital improvement fund.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven-zero. The next item on the agenda is consider the formation of a selection committee to review the realtors to market the current city hall located at sixty-one, ten North Hydraulic. So, um, we brought this to you about going ahead and, and finding a realtor for us, and gave Jack and I the permission to go ahead and seek out that. So, what we ended up doing, um, we kinda wanted to make it more formal. So, Jack, um, sent out a RFP, and we've got those back now. And what we're just looking at is to maybe get two council members to, uh, join Jack and I to help in the selection process, go ahead and get the city hall listed. Jim?
I feel like I could provide some pretty good input on this. It's pretty closely related to what I do in my day jobs, so I'd, I'd volunteer to, to be on this selection committee if acceptable to the rest of you.
Okay. Joel?
I, I would, I think I'd actually really enjoy this.
Okay. All right, Tom?
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve them being on the committee with you.
All right. Joel and Jim on the committee? John, did you want a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven-zero. Um, next is governing body reports. One thing I want to bring up is I just want to give appreciation to staff for everything that's going on with the building, and it, we... for everything that's going on with the building and it, we, you know, it sounds so simple that, you know, we got an architect, they put together plans, we went out for bids, we got a contractor, they started building the building. But there's just so many intimate details and making sure that the building's done properly, things that you see during that. All department heads and staff have been actively involved with making sure that we do the right things and we're not cutting corners in there. You know, just like coming back with these, uh, access points and the switch that we need within the building. So I just wanna put my personal thanks out for staff, for all their hard work. You know, Jack's thrown in a lot of man-hours on, you know, who would've thought furniture, but that's a very tasking thing to try to figure out all the furnishings for that, for that building. And the other small things that we're gonna continue to need going forward, you know, we're, we're in the final stretches now. They're gonna be meeting weekly with the contractor, looking at things, getting to the point of getting finishing touches done. And I really appreciate, um, all the staff's additional work on this. This is not something that probably most of us have ever been a part of and they've just handled it with stellar class and it's very impressive to have staff and department heads that, um, take pride in the building and want it to shine what it's done and be efficient. So, thank you. Jim?
I have nothing to add tonight.
Joel?
Tom?
Water issues on one-thirty-five, fifty-third. Jack and I talked to KDOT yesterday, we're gonna meet with them and find out what we can do about some of the issues down there, if there's anything we can do. One of the things I've been hearing and it's been affecting other parts of the country is recycling going up because they're getting less money for it. And people are throwing things away that they shouldn't be throwing away in recycling and I, do we have anything on the website that says what's recyclable and what's not? I have people say you can't throw certain kinds of paper away and, and I, I don't know if we're contributing to a problem that maybe we need to work.
I'll let Dana come up here, this is her wheelhouse.
I'm gonna be dumb. I mean, I assume if it's paper, you can throw it away and I've been told you can't some paper and, you know.
Well, we will check to make sure that that is on the website and it, and it is, it is in the post and we do try to get that information out and we'll make sure that, that, uh, it is out and our recycling costs are in our contract and have not gone up. So we do encourage all of our citizens to recycle and we'll do a push for that again.
I understand that they're, they haven't gone up, but I, I just wanna ensure that we're doing what we can to keep it where it's at. And it's like, I know Styrofoam has a number on the bottom of it, but our recycler doesn't take it, so. And there's just issues like that people don't know.
So there, there is a diagram that shows all of those things and we will do another push to make sure that our citizens are aware of that and that we're encouraging them to recycle.
Okay, thank you.
Melvin?
I just, uh, wanted, the citizens of Park City be patient with all the construction going on there and, uh, it's gonna be a great thing when it's done, but, uh, yeah, my patience included. No, 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 no. I've already had them.
All right. Gary?
I have nothing to add tonight.
George? Yeah, I want, I was encouraged on Fifty-third Street at Echo Hills, they're starting to move dirt, so I'm encouraged by that, um, get that project up and, and running. Also, our Park City Efficient Derby coming up on June seventeenth from nine to eleven. For those folks new coming into, to the city, it's a free event sponsored by the city. Uh, it encompasses all age groups from zero to ninety-nine and, uh, it's from nine to eleven at Chisholm Point Pond on North Grove. So if you have little ones, you have nieces, nephews, grandkids, um, there'll be information on Channel Seven as well as the Park City Post, so look forward to that. Thank you.
All right, John?
I have nothing.
John?
I'll make a motion with Jim.
Sirs. Jim, a second. Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes seven-zero.